I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
One nation, under God, indivisible, governable, and just as for all.
Okay, welcome everyone to the October 16th meeting. Minutes of October 2nd, we have a motion to approve the minutes of October 2nd.
Somebody say it.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills, do we have a motion to approve the financial report? So, second, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? I did have one question, I thought. Let me see here, which where was that? Where was that? I think I can answer it myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Budget Amendment 2025-011. The purpose of this budget amendment is for allocating ARCA funds in the amount of $860,000 for replacement of the Ultraviolet Disinfection Unit at the Elton Waste Water Treatment Unit. Louis, did you want to talk about this because it's under your administration report before we?
Yes, I'll talk about it, I have represented from, from Arcarius. The current system there has been in operation since 2008, roughly. It's a plan one online, and it's a Calgon Carbon Corporation UV system, and I think it's more now. And Jason and his team are recommending a Trojan system. And that will require replacement of a lot of the components in that UV system. And as a result, they've had engaged engineering along with Trojan representatives and a contractor who could install this. And the total cost of the replacement of this unit will be $860,000. And one of the costs involved here is they have to have a UV system in operation during the course of this replacement. So they have to bring in a mobile unit and set it up right.
Yes, sir.
And to take the waste water, filtered waste water, run it through the trailer system or the UV in the trailer, and then run it out, and then once they're done, then they can switch over to the, to the new Trojan system. And I think the recommendation is from Severn, I mean, from, from, to proceed with this project. I think it takes about probably three months to get the equipment done, the Trojan, because it should be mentioned back. Once they get that equipment in, then they'll work and coordinate with short line construction to put it in. And it would take approximately a month to put it in, do you think, or?
One to, one to two months, yes.
I'm sorry, I can't.
One to two months.
Oh, one to two months to put it in?
Yeah.
So, but it won't compromise the treatment of wastewater from that plant. So I recommend that we do that. And in conjunction with that, we'll use ARCA money for the capital defense involved in this project. We do have that available.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve Budget Amendment 2025-011 for allocating money to move forward with the Ultraviolet Disinfectant Unit at the Elton Waste Water Treatment Plant? Second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have another Budget Amendment 2025-012 to amend fiscal year 2025 budget expenditure $20,000 by creating a new budget line for Internet service. So I guess what you're requesting is a, just a new line item on the?
In the budget, it'll be sitting on the municipal building budget. It looks as though it was not previously budgeted for, and it was coming out of dues and subscriptions, which it shouldn't. So that's pretty much it.
Very good. We have a motion to accept the Budget Amendment 2025, which is more clerical than anything, of -012 for creating a new budget line item for Internet services. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion from the board on this? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, it is 12:05 on the button, we got Jean Minter going to present to us Ordinance 6-2024, which is amending the Town of Elton zoning ordinance, Article 6, Hearing Procedures for Appeals and Applications. The amendments pertain to Section 5, and this is presented for introduction. Can you tell us a little bit about this, Jean?
Sure. So ordinarily, we would require a stenographer to report proceedings of a Board of Appeals meeting. That's been increasing in cost over the years, and sometimes it's difficult to obtain the services of a stenographer. So in reviewing the ordinance, the zoning administrator, in consultation with our attorney, had determined that since we already record audio and video of the, of the proceedings, that should someone desire a transcript be made, they can request that from us, and a transcript could be made from the audio or video of the proceedings. So this ordinance allows the audio/video recordings and a transcript, which would only be supplied upon the filing of an appeal at the cost of the appellant in lieu of a stenographer each meeting. And the Planning Commission had heard this amendment on October 7th of 2024, and we recommend an approval of this amendment.
Very good. This is a public meeting on Ordinance 6-2024. Is there anyone that has anything to say about this ordinance? Anyone on the Zoom meeting has anything to say about this ordinance? Any of the board members have anything to say about this ordinance?
No, other than the fact that Jean reminded me when I first came on the board, when we had public hearing meeting, we used to always have stenographers coming in here, bringing the little machine or whatever, and whenever they do their service, they had to meet them. But I don't know whether the technology is some way or the other, something has changed that. But what, what has that been?
Yes, because of the technology, we're actually recording it, and we're doing night reading meetings on Zoom, which is also recorded.
Okay, so that's to change that house.
And the courts have known this direction as well.
Okay. And they only need it upon request, right?
If they need it, if something should happen, they go to court, I think they can request a transcript. A transcript could be made, and they get it into the court record.
Just on my point of curiosity, do we have a stenographer on staff, or do we hire one from the courthouse?
They're hired and paid as a.
We just hire them as needed?
Correct.
So we could save that expense?
Exactly.
Unless it's requested.
Correct.
Very good. Okay, so we won't, we're going to take action on this as soon as we close the public hearing. So let's move on to Ordinance 7-2024, Amending the Elton Town Zoning Ordinance, Article 12, Supplementary Use Regulations. The amendment pertains to Section 21, Mini Warehouses On-Site Storage Presented for Introduction.
So this amendment had come about as a request from a party that owned a large tract of land, approximately nine acres or more. They certainly have an existing mini storage warehouse on the site. Our current regulations restrict the amount of outdoor storage for like boats and trailers to 75% of the site that can be enclosed in individual stalls that are underproofed. This would reduce that to 65%, would have to be underproofed, and then the balance could be kept as outdoor storage for boats and trailers and that sort of thing. There's a need for it. And in this case, this use, or the option to reduce the onsite storage space to 65% within individual enclosed stalls, only pertains to lots that are greater than nine acres. It would have to be a larger lot, so we could allow a little more surface storage as opposed to enclosed storage.
Very good. What did the Planning Commission have to say?
I'm sorry, the Planning Commission? On October 7th, unanimously recommended approval as opposed to that.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience and/or on Zoom have any questions or comments in regards to this? Does anyone from the board have any question or comment in regards to this?
The recommendation by the Planning Commission was also to require that the proposed use would have to come before the Planning Commission for approval, unless we're sure that the adequate screening.
Perfect.
Sort of thing, so they might have to come before the Planning Commission for a site check.
I think it's great. That's great, thank you. Okay, it is 12:10, this public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 6-2024, amending the Town of Elton zoning ordinance as it pertains to recording or recording the minutes?
Soon moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on Ordinance 6-2024? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 7-2024, amending the Town of Elton zoning ordinance, which pertains to the onsite storage?
Soon moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have a bid opening. Dan, you're going to do the bid opening, Michelle?
I got it.
Louis is doing the bid opening. Project 2023-003, the Artesian Water Route 40 Interconnect. So it looks like we only had one bidder?
Yeah, we only had one bidder, and the base bid is $751,000. $750 contingency is $24,500. Contingency, basically, they need to do road cuts versus directional drilling. And total bid, assuming the contingency is used, $776,250. And the engineering's already been done, obviously, for this project. And the recommendation going public works, and the town administrator to proceed so we can have this interconnect sorted as soon as we can. I think I contacted Artesian quite a while ago, January, to do their end of it. And they come to a bolt on Route 40, and then we take it from that bolt across the street up by Williams, then across over onto next to where the old, what's it, the Jones Academy thing is in that area, and then connect our system. One of the valuable components of decision-making on this project was the fact that this extra water will be available through our distribution system for South Fields. Because it's, we can take up to a million gallons on this thing, too. So if we run short, and from well four, we'll just have backup water through the distribution system for South Fields. Obviously, that's going to be a really big project, demanding a lot of water, so this project is very important in order to supplement both our distribution system in town and through South Fields. So I recommend that the board have.
Lou, do you have any concern that there's only one bidder, or should we?
No, we actually had, I think, they had a bid, I mean, a bid meeting, and they had several, but there only one came, so we did our job. We had the proper procedure in place, it just seems like maybe only one contractor wanted to be involved, so.
Very good. Thank you.
We'll stick with that.
Do we have a motion to accept Adel Construction at 10 Adel Drive in Newark, Delaware to move forward with the Artesian Water Route 40 Interconnect at a base bid of $751,750, contingency bid $24,500, and a total of $776,250? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on this? Our chief, yes ma'am?
I have a question.
Yep.
Our water connect doesn't go all the way to the Delaware line. When we had 7-Eleven coming in on the corner of Maloney Road and Route 40, we were going to ask them to extend the water line up to Maloney Road, remember that?
I remember.
Will this provide access for us to supply water, be going from our direction, to land there?
To Maloney Road, you mean?
At least. What if we were to annex?
I have no idea whether the distribution system, there's no distribution system for Maloney Road.
Not for Maloney Road, I'm saying up Route 40, like when 7-Eleven wanted to come in, there was no water line there. They would have had to create one to connect into our system. And even if the property next to it were the stove storage or whatever there, if we ever wanted to annex that into the Town of Elton, could we supply water to them through that same system?
I can't answer the question because I don't know the distribution system that would be affected there. All I know is that the water comes through and ties into the area next to Chesapeake Boulevard. It's in a main system right there.
Yeah.
What happens after that?
Well, I think if, if we were to move.
I don't know.
If we were to produce, or need to send water, as Louis mentioned earlier, to the South Fields project, we'd go right by it.
And also, I believe Chip's got a comment for you, he's online.
Hey, Chip.
Hi. I just wanted to clarify that the developer of 7-Eleven did run the water main up to Maloney Road.
Oh, he did?
Really?
Yes.
Okay, I was not aware of that.
How you like that?
There's a hydrant there.
Well, I knew it was a requirement of their development, so that we already, you know, had to be done. So we have access up to that point, or we can provide water up to that point.
Yes.
Yes.
I think the question was, there was some discussion about extending it down to Maloney Road, but we never did, but I forgot, there is a hydrant up there.
Yeah, I think that was a hypothetical question based on need or future, you know, what could possibly happen? Because there was no connect there. But if we had, Chip, if we had to go further towards the Delaware line, would this connect provide a means for that?
The new connect?
Uh huh.
Well, I mean, it could be extended from the.
Maloney Road?
Road.
To the connect that we're, we're getting ready to approve?
Well, that would be, that would be extended to the west, yeah, this is a connected line.
Okay, so that's, we're good.
I think this might be a tail. This is like sentiment.
Sounds like we're good. All right, thank you.
None of that's in tail. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Lou, anything else to report?
No, I, yeah, we already covered Route 40, I mean, not the Route 40, but the Waste Water Treatment Plant. But I have an economic development proclamation.
Yes, sir.
On my agenda here.
All right.
I'm going to read that.
Thank you.
Proclamation of the Mayor and Commissioner of the Town Development, appearing October 21st through the 25th, 2024, as Economic Development Week in Elton. Whereas economic development relies on local government leaderships to promote and support a vision for developing resilient communities. Whereas the Mayor and Commissioner recognizes that supporting existing businesses and creating opportunities for new businesses and entrepreneurs are key components of strengthening Elton's economic future for generations to come. And whereas economic development organizations such as Maryland Economic Development Association and the Elton Line serve as resources committed to enhancing Elton's economic growth and vitality. Now therefore being known that the Mayor and Commissioner of the Town of Elton provide for a claim October 21st through 25th, 2024, as Economic Development Week in Elton, and encourage all citizens to support local businesses, recognize the contributions of economic development organizations, and the importance of building and maintaining healthy economy.
We have a motion to accept proclamation PE 58-20284.
Soon moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, Lou. Okay, we've got a few things later on this week. We have a parade happening in downtown Elton on Friday, the Halloween Parade, and I'm assuming that the business owners will be also giving out some candy to all the participants. I believe we have a ribbon cutting also on Friday, if that's still on the agenda. And on Saturday, the 19th, we've got Singly Fire Company's Trump Board Treat. So that was on Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00. Other than that, that's all I have to report. Earl?
Yeah, let me start with her. I don't have anything to report. Robert?
How I wish I could do an Earl Piner impersonation. No, I have nothing to report except to say that I will be attending the quarterly end of Elton tomorrow night about hour. I look forward to it, we always make some good contacts when we go to these meetings, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
They need a Will MacGo, so maybe you want to accept that?
I think I did a great job for Rob to be the Will MacGo guy.
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
Charles?
I don't have anything but to ask the chief. You know, when you have, and of course, it hasn't come this way, and hopefully it won't come this way, but you look at the ball in the news and you see all the violence in Howard County and other places. What, if you had some incidents here with misbehavior with juveniles, what would you be governed under as far as what Cecil County, or you could do with them as far as punishment or taking them to court, or what is there?
Well, yeah, but under the new Maryland Juvenile Reform Act, we, they raise the age of accountability responsibility for juveniles from seven to about, some, some you can be charged with with ten, but it's got to be a serious crime of violence. And then beyond that, it's, I believe it's 12. We are running into that right now in town, where we have some juveniles that are really wreaking some havoc. For those of you who follow some of the private Facebook groups and the communities, you might see that up in Walnut Hill, for instance. There's a couple juveniles up there that are in that age. We have reached out to juvenile services and submitted referral for SENS, child who needs supervision. And initially, I was kind of kicked back and said that, you know, they weren't going to handle this referral. But, you know, I have some officers that are pretty persistent, and they really have documented the issues that they created up there and followed up with them. And we just got notice that they actually are going to pursue that referral. So we're working with juvenile services to see what we can do. Hearing the juvenile services, or some legislators are trying to look at those laws, because you know, with every law, there could be some unintended consequences, and I think that's exactly what's happened with this. The car thefts are way up, and a lot of that's, you know, we attribute back to the juvenile laws. That's across the state, but we've dealt with here in Cecil County over the last six months or so. Actually had a meeting last night, a follow-up meeting, the Danford Drive community, and we had some of our folks come out there. We still have no problem with the 111 Danford Drive, that's juvenile related, we're reaching out to the landlord on that one. But the good news is out there, is, I was going to give you a follow-up, but anyway, but I want to make sure I answered your question. So this is just some of the things that we're trying to do. Work with the parents, work with Cecil mediation, work with juvenile services, whatever we might be able to do to try and get, have that come along. We want to be a little proactive, and we have applied for a grant to try and do some juvenile programs where the officers are acting sort of as mentors. We haven't heard back on that grant application yet, but even if we don't get that, we're going to do some form of that. We just actually met with somebody last night, just briefly, as a result of this meeting, that's with the Boys and Girls Club out of Thompson Estate. So even if we can't do something ourselves, we're going to partner with some of these organizations so that you can try and be a little more proactive. You know, we've got also Willma in the middle, middle school now, too, so we're trying to really connect with these kids to be a little bit more on the proactive side of that and prevention side. Could I answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you very much.
Just, if I could just finish about the Danford Drive comment?
I was going to bring that up.
Okay.
So please, yes.
Sure. So we had four people show up, one was a landlord, and then his niece, who actually works for the Cecil Wig, and then two homeowners. They were not the one, neither of them had, came to that first meeting. But I kind of looked at that as a good thing. We had pulled statistics for the last year out of Danford Drive, and most of the, the majority of the calls were out there, were generated by the police, either patrol checks, follow-ups, so it was very little crime. But there is still some crime out there. They did comment on DPW coming out there and said they're killing it out there, every day, helping and picking up trash and doing what they need to do. So that was, that was really good. They had mentioned that they had gotten, the landlord had gotten a letter, we got a letter from our code enforcement. He waited until he got that letter because it was functioning, but it was, it was one of those I-swords that need to be taken care of. When he got the letter from our code enforcement officer, he took care of it. So there is some feedback as far as that goes. Their biggest problem right now is trash. And trash flowing through there and people dumping trash. So the landlord is Andrew Wilbauer, and he is wanting to create or, or coordinate a cleanup day. So he's looking at it from his end, he's going to coordinate with Lieutenant Confer from our Community Engagement Division, Angelo from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and Policy was there with us last night. So we're all going to try and get together and we'll, we'll see if we can't coordinate with Dan and do some kind of cleanup day out there. Even, like he said, you get a couple people interested and involved, at least shows a community that we care. And then there's something done. But all of them have said in the last three years or so, they've seen great improvement out there. So I, I have to take that for what it's worth, and I just appreciate the small successes out there. So I'll give you some feedback on that.
Thank you. Jean, anything else?
Well, just that, I was going to ask you, I just found out that you had this meeting last night. I'm sorry that you had such a low attendance.
That's okay, sometimes they can still be very productive.
Yeah, I think there are, there are a few people out there, and they're all afraid to speak up.
And I think so, too. I think so, too.
And I, I had encouraged one person to maybe put it in a letter, but they didn't want to do that. So I don't know, but I think you mentioned 111?
Yeah. And that's come up at both release meetings. I'm really going to hit the landlord hard and start telling him, but this is the juvenile, again.
Again, how old is, how old is the juvenile now?
I think he's 11, but I'm not sure, it could be older.
He's older.
He might be older.
Is not the same juvenile pictured in a Walmart, or no?
Might be, there was an older one and a younger one, I think.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was, I heard that there was a yard full of bicycles that were there, and then all of a sudden they disappeared. A yard full, like 20. How is that possible? And then they just disappeared, I guess someone picked them up, I don't know. But, yeah, that's, 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 oh.
Well, there's a lack of.
That's a tough one for you.
There's a lack of supervision and accountability there, so.
Yes, yes, but if your presence is out there, and that's all, I mean, that's awesome, I think. I think it encourages the neighborhood to be more proactive, and they feel like somebody cares.
I agree, I agree. Like I said, we got a need on these landlords that are not, are not doing what they need to do. And in all fairness, we got to make sure that the landlord knows there's a problem there, because if I don't tell them, who's telling them?
Correct. And I, I firmly believe, too, that some of these landlords that are ignoring us should pay out of pocket, because that, to me, is the only thing that might wake them up. You know, they're collecting rent, that's all they care about, basically. So, yeah, I wanted to ask you about that, thank you for doing that, that was awesome to find out that you went there. My only other thing was Officer Devine, you had sent us an email, and I found it intriguing about the device that you're talking about. But I didn't know if we could, if we were going to have any further discussion on that.
Well, you certainly can, whenever you want to.
I, I mean, this.
Well, you know, we had, we talked about kiosses.
Yeah.
In the downtown, and we talked about, I think there was a comment over in Button Woods, I think that's where it kind of came from, right?
Okay. Yeah, the parking, oh, we all know.
Yeah, it was like a paved parking in, in that neighborhood, but I don't know if we'd go that direction or not. But I think, but I think the kiosses is something I still like to, for us to move forward with in some way. Now, I saw a comment that said it was financially, I, I don't.
We don't know.
I, I don't know who made that comment, I mean, I don't. I mean, I don't know where that came from.
We originally met with the representatives and I don't have a proposal in front of me, so I can't do it from memory. And I don't know if either.
I'd like to revisit it again. Because I think that, I think that it's something we can budget for.
And I totally appreciate, and also, too, maybe taking it step by step. When the point of view, and I don't know how the board feels about this, but just throwing it out there to you, think about TurnQuest. You have special purpose parking.
Yeah.
Now, that's admin-heavy, when I mean, not admin department-heavy. I mean, administration of doing that is, it's a lot of manpower involved. But if you were to do something like that for Button Woods as well, and if I've got this right, Officer Divine, so if you had the two handheld devices, let's be very specific, to Button Woods or TurnQuest, and they have permits issued to their vehicles. So your parking enforcement official, at that point, scan those vehicles, right? And that they are, they belong here or don't, not necessarily in spot one twenty-two or one twenty-three, but two vehicles and then anybody else that doesn't have a permit, then tickets could be issued under that, right?
Yeah, and it could just be one of those where the town would designate the spots, that we could have that in there. I'd be curious to know, and I just haven't followed up on it because I didn't know what direction you were going, but that could we even narrow it down by block? Because you might be able to do that. If you can narrow it down by neighborhood, why couldn't we narrow it down by a hundred blocks, two hundred blocks, three hundred blocks? So just a thought, Anthony had approached me with this and said, when you guys were first looking at the Button Woods stuff and said that they did, he reached out to come and said they did have a component that would deal with the, with that part of it and the special permit parking and things like that. So otherwise, she's right, it's a mess and a bear to handle without some kind of software to do that. I just wanted to give you that option.
I think it's, personally, I'd like to know more and compare it to our other options.
I'll get the original proposal.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one more thing. Dan, twenty-one truckloads of yard waste to the nature area. Is that something, was it material that we can't take to the dump?
We store, basically, everything that we store at the Judge Chapel. So we store right there, then later on, we move it after the landfill.
Well, that's my point. We talked about this before. Are we gonna hire an outside contractor to come in there?
Like woodchips and all, we can do that internally. It all depends on how big the stuff is there. Like the woodchips, we can take ourselves from doing that, so that's not an issue. But some of the bigger trees and all that kind of stuff, that's what we need to look into. Because some of the stuff we've got.
That need, they have to be grinded?
Right, exactly. But there's not that much of it. And because we need initial cleanup, now it's pretty much limited. So it's a lot better than what it was.
Well, we are taking some to the dump? You told me that, or told the board that we are?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have the thing about taking waste that we're gonna pay someone else to haul to the dump.
Well, the issue is it's yard waste. It's gotta go somewhere. That's, and what happens is Judge Chapel's only so big. That's the program, you know? You keep collecting it, it's gotta go somewhere.
So yard waste doesn't go to the dump?
No, no, you're always gonna dump it. That's what we're trying to do to be more efficient. We take it, you know, we store it down there, we get truckloads and we send it to the dump. But I mean, so the landfill, but it is just yard waste itself. It's just, it kind of never ends. So that's why we try to mitigate as best we can and we take it up in fuller loads. So for this, everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the official trick or treat night is Thursday the thirty-first.
I have nothing else.
Thank you. You know, I do have one additional thing. When you used the word bicycles a little while ago and you said there was twenty in that yard, and I just want us all to think about this and it's not, Chief, I guess I'm gonna lean a little bit on you on this and I just want the board to kind of think about it and I don't want any action today. But in our charter, you know, it states that anyone that owns a bicycle is supposed to have their bicycles registered in the Town of Elton. It's something that we've never followed during my years. I think when I first came on the board in nineteen ninety-four, I remember there was some talk about making sure people had their bicycles registered. Well, today, it's a little different. Seems like everyone has a bicycle and we're getting more bicycle traffic on the roads in the Town of Elton. And saying that, none of them are in, well, I would say, from what I was educated on, going with the flow of traffic, I don't know if that's a law today to go the opposite way. Are these folks breaking the law that's riding around town on their bicycles?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, I would think so. So I guess what, I know it would be a man-hour zoo, let's say. But I think at some point, I want the board to kind of think about this, is that I think we need to, we need to take some action on these bicyclists. I mean, at some points, one of these bicyclists is gonna get hit going the wrong direction. You know, we've been, it's not, it's gonna happen. They're going through four-way stop signs, they're going through the red lights. They're everywhere and you can't keep your head turned in every direction. I don't know what the answer is because I know it's, what do we, how do we put the, how do we weigh this out on the scales? But maybe everyone give it some thought. Maybe at a future workshop, we'll come up with a game plan on how we educate the public on riding. I'm not looking at ticketing everyone, but I know it would be man-hours to stop them and say, listen, hey, you're going the wrong way. And it would only take, as many goes through our town, it'd probably only take one week of that.
Yeah, we could absolutely do some educational.
I think that's what I'm asking. Louis?
I think we, yesterday I was at the intersection of forty to thirteen and some woman on one of those scooters, electric scooter. Flying across Route forty. She must spend twenty or thirty miles an hour as zooming around in traffic. Because it's not just bicycles.
Scooters are big.
The scooters, yeah, the scooters are going big right now.
Electric bicycles, is that what they're called?
The electric bicycles.
Actually, when the scooter, like you stand doing like.
Oh, my God.
She comes through my neighborhood all the time, the scooter. A lot of them's coming from Far Creek.
That's where they come to your neighborhood.
Yeah, she comes from Far Creek. Yeah, I don't know. Well, listen, this is the time we open up the floor. I know, Alicia, you had something positive you wanna say for the Town of Elton today?
We said it all. Parade is Friday night. The mayors are emcee. We have three judges. The numbers are gaining traction every day, so it's gonna be a great night. The weather is going to be perfect.
It's gonna be great. Pat, anything today?
I, my mom, I automatically went to the Halloween Parade and one of them's supposed to be doing that night, so I wasn't really paying attention. Pardon me, what was that again?
I was just asking if you had anything to do for the Town of Elton?
No, I'm good.
All right. Anyone on the Zoom meeting?
No.
All right. Oh, the John Downs, come on, you're on.
The ribbon cutting on Friday?
Yes.
It's actually eleven thirty, maybe Michelle can help me, it's a location, but it's four of the fiber optic class. And they'd like to get some people out there because they wanna start making contact and.
I think we are, I think we're still working on that agreement. I saw some notes going back and forth with Lou, so I'm not sure where we're at.
I'm working on a, let's call it a, a gigabit passive optical, optical network. I never heard, I had to actually research it. But in the agreement, they said they would provide that to the town, but in another part of the agreement, said they wouldn't give us any equipment. So if they don't give us any equipment, it wouldn't work.
That's right.
They're going over that, the chain. So as soon as I get that, I'll send it out to the board.
It's at the Elton Alliance. Can I ask a question? If this agreement isn't done, is the groundbreaking not?
No, we'll have the groundbreaking.
Okay.
Okay. One last thing, my wife just sent me a picture, our planning commission person, Ed Ginder, is on the front page of the Cecil Wig today. What do you think of that?
That was a great article.
Fifty years, fifty years at Delaware football. I think they even mentioned Rob Alt is one of the.
They did.
Yeah.
You know the chain gang?
I was, I actually, I think, you know, he asked me the other day, when was my first time I worked on the chain gang? And I believe it was, I'm almost thinking like nineteen eighty-six or eighty-seven was the first time I worked the chain gang. And then I remember Rich Gannon, who went to play professional football. I remember he was on the field. So whatever year that was, it might've been a little bit later than after that. But then I sporadically worked the chain gang. And then I guess maybe ten years ago, I worked it for about a five-year stretch, like every game. But Ed Ginder, in fifty years, has only missed two games.
Yeah. It's a multi-page article, it's very good.
Is he still doing it?
He's still doing it, yeah. Ed's still in charge of, I mean, it's strange how it's happened, but Ed takes that job very seriously. And I will tell you that the officials, the respect that the actual CAA officials gives to our group has been, it's like, they say we're the best in the nation. They seriously mean that. They said, there's, we don't even have to tell you guys what to do. So Ed Ginder does a good job. Kudos to Ed. All right, meeting adjourned.